Contract regarding the service fees is any time.
Okay.
It doesn't, it doesn't have anything to do with this piece of legislation and bidding it. That just has to do with how we administer the system going forward.
Okay, thank you.
The, the fees are not charged until, I think, six or 12 months after the project's completed. So we would have all of next year to work out. If we, we all dislike those fees, if we want to eliminate it, it's something we can easily take care of before anybody gets charged.
All right, we'll talk in between because we have obviously more questions. Thank you, sir.
All right. During the utilities, you can move now to one of three zoning committee meetings of Mr. Hoyer. The first one is the Clinton Township annexation.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is Council, this is ordinance 2023-28. It's up for second reading tonight. This is the, I'll let Mayor Mavis explain where. But we are offering police protection, fire protection, emergency medical services, potable water, wastewater, and stormwater services. Mayor Mavis, I have 15 minutes. If you'd like to leave us five more questions, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Shortly after I left this office, a lot of people would see me on the street and they'd call me Mayor Mavis. And that, in the early days, I used to correct them and say, "Former mayor." But then I recall the president, the past president, past senators, they all get called that. So I don't say anything to them now.
I could go back, I could go back to when you were my eighth grade teacher and go, "Mr. Mavis."
Yeah. One of the things I did after I left office was get myself appointed to the board trustees of the Knox County Historic Museum, located on Hardcore Road. And when, before I got there, they had entered into a contract with a consulting firm to look at the possibility of expanding it, modernizing and updating all of the features of the building. And as I was reading through that, I noticed that there was a huge fee for an increase in the water valve. And I got to thinking about, I knew, by the way, we do have out there the water and wastewater. We pay the 40% in our share of that. But I thought maybe there would be an advantage to annexing into the city. And so one evening at a board meeting, I mentioned it, and Mark Gramzer, who's the chair, said, "It sounds like a good idea, why don't you do it?" That's why I'm here tonight. So you have, if you've seen maps, is there one up somewhere?
These were...
Does everybody know where the Hardcore Road?
Do you guys?
A few years ago, there was actually Clinton Township trustee for a while, Earl Justice, and he wanted to build a mobile home park. And so he bought a piece of ground out there and, and if you look at a map, Mike's car is here. His mobile home park is over in this area. But he annexed all of this area. Here is the museum property here. So he annexed all of that, thinking that he was going to expand his mobile home park, add a lot of homes to it. But as age catches us all, it caught him. And he decided that he couldn't do that, didn't want to do it, and so he has since passed away. But only part of the, only part of the mobile home park was ever built. Eventually, he wanted to sell, but when he decided he couldn't expand. So the museum purchased right behind that, already annexed into the city. So we have, it's just under 15 acres. So what we're doing is kind of taking our existing, where the building is, adding that to ground that's already in the city. And so it is an annexation request.
I'm on my hotspot, my phone.
To do that. Glad to answer any questions. I thought coming up the steps, they're probably going to ask me how many, how much ground is in that. And I, frankly, I don't know how many acres. It looks like it, it might be seven or eight acres, maybe, that we are going to annex into the city.
It's in the legislation.
4.325.
I missed it.
And it is, one of the questions that will be asked, and I have trouble with this word. It is contiguous to city already, so that's taken care of.
It used to be, back in the old days when I was here and before the type 2 annexation was initiated, there was always that fear about creating islands, that you actually created a township, islands around about a city. Someone might be able to make that case here, but if you look at it, there, there's some connections there. Williams Street is still in the township. Westgate Mobile Home Park is in, but the school bus garage, it used to be the school bus garage, that didn't come in. When they annexed that mobile home park and, and then shortly after Earl annexed his, the school board was contacted. But if they would have annexed the employees at the school bus garage, we would have had to pay city income tax. So they elected not to join that. That's why, as you look at your map, that, that piece there is still outside the city.
Rob, a couple of questions. So by coming into the city, they stopped paying, surcharge Clinton Township altogether?
40%.
The 40% they dropped?
Yeah.
And then taxes? What happens there? Just for the record, taxes stay in the township.
Property tax.
Property tax.
Thank you. Questions? I mean, we got the man here for a while, let's pick his brain.
Well, he hasn't been here for a while, so.
Yeah, I have not. By the way, this is the first time I've been back. This has been modernized a little bit since I was here. I think we did replace the benches, the church views, but a lot of the stuff is nice.
I do have, on this particular ordinance, I, when I read over it and looked at the other ordinances for annexation, the parcel numbers were not in this legislation. Here, Rob. So I, it's a second reading tonight, I want to do a third reading.
We can't. This has to, we...
I didn't get that.
This has to be passed by Wednesday. We, this is, we have the, this is the 20 days. And when we talked about this originally, just because of the way it fell, we were able to get the first reading in at, like, the day or two days after we got it. And the 20 days will be on Wednesday, so.
So I have to suspend the rule?
So we're going to amend it to include the parcels?
I have to, it's not even in the legislation.
Well, it's, it's...
It's not on the second page, neither, the rest of it's full legislation.
It's, it's part of the, it's in the attachment, but it's in the attachment.
Okay, because it's not in the two pages we got, so that's why I brought it up.
Where is it attached? Yeah, it's in the packet, so.
All right, I don't have to amend that.
So we need amendment or not?
They're saying no.
No, because it's in, if you take a look in the consenting to the annexation, if you look at exhibit A on there, it has all of the parcel numbers on there.
That's fine. The only reason I brought it up is because the other legislation has it in the heading.
I mean, if that's what, if that's the way Council wants it, we can do that in the future.
I don't need extra work. You're saying I need amendment, I'm not amended.
I see it in here, so that would make sense.
Yeah, so.
This is in exhibit A here?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions? Mayor, we have till 6:25. What else do you like to talk to us about? I gotta keep writing, figure out something.
You know, when you're on council or in the mayor's position or safety service position, you have all of these things confronting you. And so I'm sitting back and, the good thing is we don't have a regular daily, or week, or daily newspaper, so I don't get to read all this stuff. So I don't worry about it. I know that you all are being confronted by about everything imaginable, whether it be weather-related, street-related, swimming pool-related, or just weather, so.
Well, we're making everybody happy.
That'd be first. But anyway, yeah, I commend you all. By the way, thank you for hearing this piece tonight. And I guess the commissioners, Zach DiMarco is the legal person that's handling that and talked to Rob briefly about it. So we're thankful that you'll be able to push this on through. And I think it's going to take over 60 days or something before it becomes official or something.
No, what happens is it goes back to the, to the county commissioner. The county commissioner will then have a hearing and, and they will put it on there. And then it will come back to us. And this is the consent to annexation. And then the next one will be the actual decision to annex. And that will be between 60 and 120 days after the legislation comes back.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Council, do you have a problem with suspending rules?
No, but I wonder if, just to be consistent with what we've always done, that we do get the parcel numbers and amend it into here.
No, because I just threw that away. I just changed the way I'm going to word it, and I just threw it away, and then law...
It, it depends on which, some of them have it and some of them don't. I'm happy to make sure that they get in there in the future, but we've been inconsistent in the past.
Okay, I'm good with that.
Just so Council knows, the city internet is down. If you want to get on the internet, I have my hotspot on. You can go to my hotspot. If you want to see WeGovernor, whatever, if you want to see that on there, you could use my hotspot and do that.
And our technician is right on top of it, right?
He got me logged on at the wifi.
He did?
Yeah.
It, it looks like the, the guest is down, but the regular city is up.
Bruce, we have five minutes. If you need to take it so you can get logged in there?
He could, he could help you. What's your name again, sir?
This is Ben.
Maybe he can log me in. I'm on my hotspot, but if he wants to log me into the regular one, it'd be better.
Rob, I shared the console with you.
Be faster.
I'll just wait. No. So where's your guy? I thought your lawyer was going to be here.
So I just pulled up the email, Bruce, and then...
Got four minutes, like, I haven't worked.
Agenda from the email.
We're good.
He's paid by the hour, he shows up.
I got WeGovernor from my hotspot to that. That's what I do when I, when I'm meeting.
I don't have any, I mean, I downloaded this, so it may be still there.
We're good.
Pulled it down.
Good on that one.
But my wifi said it's good.
Hey, Bruce. Couple minutes. I told her she'd step out a second, since we had a few minutes. That's fine. Oh, you didn't interrupt, but?
No.
I know nothing about this.
Yeah, my wifi's still up.
We're still recording. Good, and it's been on since we started?
It's on.
Good.
Thank you.
Rob, you're on. Thank you.
Yeah, I got on to the, the regular city wifi, not the guest.
So we're good to 6:25, maybe I'll take a walk.
Don't get lost. Do we need to put some breadcrumbs down so you know which way to come back?
No one brought them. Yeah, barely leave work at 4:00. Correct?
Now Bruce is gone, Mike.
The one that was sent today.
Yes.
All right. You need my copy, you're good. And we need this passed tonight, correct?
Yes. What we're going to do is, for the final piece of legislation, I'm going to put it on for next meeting, even though it doesn't need to get passed till the one after that.
So just not to confuse things, we're not, we're going to do this tonight and something else later?
And then there's one more, but it's going to get two readings rather than just the one.
Thank you.
That's what I mean, that's what I mean. We're going to put it on for both meetings until I just let people see it.
Does that notice need to have anything in it other than who, what, where, why?
They send a copy, they attach to the email.
I was, the last meeting, I was out west, Arizona, Utah.
Did you have ice cream for that? Are you saying ice cream for that?
I do not.
Oh, really?
I have malfeasance, I would...
But if I did, it would be...
My wife has never been out there, so it's gross.
National parks?
Yep.
My wife's...
I see that different than you do.
Expensive, great.
Somehow memory making is also very expensive.
It's money losing, memory making.
Bruce is back, yay! You found your way back.
I'm ready.
You want to wait, go ahead.
No, we'll go with this one.
Okay, I'm going to start a couple of minutes early. From the new community authority, we're planning a zoning, Mr. Hoyer.
Okay. Council, this is a, a piece of legislation that was sent to you today. I don't know, did everybody get ordinance 2023-30? Thank you. I appreciate your patience on this. This is a piece that Mr. Gocke asked us to pass tonight. This gentleman here at the podium is going to answer every question you have on this without question, and we're going to go forward from there. Introduce yourself, please.
Absolutely. So Mike Rangel, starting with the law firm, Burke and Grayden. Thank you for allowing me to speak before you tonight, Council. We've put together a short presentation on the Mount Vernon New Community Authority. It's a summary of a lot of information that you've heard before when we first gave the presentation on what a new community authority is. And then we'd be happy to answer any additional questions that you might have. Caleb Bell, I believe, will also be joining us at some point this evening. So I'll just go ahead with the presentation until he is also here.
This is ordinance 2023-30 in your packet.
So a little bit of an overview of what this presentation will be. It'll have a formation timeline showing where we've been, where we'll go, a refresher on what a new community authority can do, examples of community facilities, characteristics that we're proposing for the Mount Vernon New Community Authority, and then a reminder of the financial models that were put together with the initial discussions for the new community authority, and how they might play out with this proposed community authority. And then also a slide about how to add territory to a new community authority once it's been established, because I think we had some questions about that at previous meetings.
While you're looking, we have 20 minutes for this, so you're going to be able to allow five minutes for questions?
Yes.
Thank you.
Essentially, one slide per topic. So June 12th, you have already passed that petition, that resolution, that filed the petition for the new community authority. And that brings us to today, June 26th, and the resolution that you have before you. It essentially determines that the NCA petition that was submitted is sufficient and schedules the public hearings for the new community authority. There'll be publication of notice of the new, of the public hearing that will be held July 24th. I believe you'll have two readings for that resolution, just so there's additional notice. And then, once the public hearing is held, the new community authority can be formed. So a refresher on what a new community authority is. One of the primary features of the new community authority is their ability to levy a community development charge. That can be, that can take many forms. What we're proposing for the Mount Vernon New Community Authority, and what we'll talk about a little bit later on, is a millage charge, similar to a real property tax, but it is not a tax. So you can use the charge to pay for community facilities, also the cost of land acquisition and land development. If you also do financing related to infrastructure for the community authority, those charges can be used to pay for that financing. Some examples of the community facilities that can be funded with community charge, a lot of your typical public infrastructure, such as roads and facilities, but also sewer, water, everything that you would need in order to create a new community, new development, but also to support existing facilities. So what was presented to you in the petition at the previous meeting, these are the characteristics of that new community authority, the Mount Vernon New Community Authority. So that's the proposed name. The initial territory for the new community authority would be 1700 Old Delaware Road, which is a city property. That city property would not be subject to charge, but it allows the city to appoint the community authority board and the developer for the entity. We're proposing a base four-mill charge with the option for the board to levy an additional charge if a developer would want to add additional amenities to their development. That would approximately be $140 annually for $100,000 in market value of property. The new community authority would have a seven-member board. Three members, the citizen members would be appointed by city council. One member appointed by city council would be a local government representative. And then three would be appointed by the mayor as the city developer members. The reason for that difference for the mayor appointing as opposed to city council, it's the same end result, but it allows for a distinction in the revised code where the developer is not always a municipal entity. So often, in instances where a developer, a private developer, is creating a new community authority, they would appoint members to the board and they'd have equal representation with the county or city that they were partnering with. And in this instance, the city would do all of the board member appointments.
Michael, back, just for clarification, the four-mill additional charge, just so people know in the public, that's not, me as a taxpayer, no, you're not increasing me four mills. You're increasing the, you explain it. But just so the guy that lives on East Sugar Street doesn't think his taxes are going up, explain that, will you?
So this is not an additional or new tax on any current residents in the city. This charge would only apply to property that is added to the new community authority. And as we'll touch on a little bit later with how you add property to the new community authority, it is not the same as if property were to be annexed into the city. That's a separate process. There'd be a separate application process if a developer wanted to bring their property into the new community authority. So no, no additional tax or charge on existing residents.
And this is, just as a residential, it includes commercial and industrial and others too?
Yes. And that is determined by, so the, the board approves the addition of territory, but it also goes before city council for your approval. And if there are any additional charges for commercial that could help support commercial more than the demand might be for residential, that can be decided by the new community authority board before any of those projects move forward.
Councilman, just one other note on, on your question. The most likely, the most likely scenario for property that's added to the community authority is that it's blank ground. It's ground that's not developed yet. And so the developer of that ground, plus the city reach an agreement to develop the property, and part of that agreement can include adding the property to the community authority. Without a property owner's consent, no property joins the community authority. So your point is very well taken. Existing property that has existing residents is totally outside of the system.
This slide and the next slide are slides that you've seen before. These were the financial models that were put together based on hypothetical millage. It shows for two potential developments, Rockford Homes and Highland Real Estate Group, if they were to be added to the new community authority, the different property types that are proposed for those developments. And it estimates this model over a 30-year period, that charge being applied. And it'll show the estimated potential revenue from that 30-year period. So at the four mills proposed in the petition for the new community authority, this would be the base millage, this could be modified by the new community authority in the future. On these two proposed developments, it would, in total, raise approximately 7.5 million over 30 years. And those charges could then, as we touched on briefly earlier, could be used to not only support the facilities for any new development, but also existing infrastructure that supports, that's related to that development in the city. As I said previously, just because property is being annexed to the city doesn't mean that it's necessarily going to be added to the new community authority. So this slide touches on how property could be added to the new community authority once it's established. And it's essentially the same process as to set up the new community, new community authority in the first place. So you'd have a developer that would approach the city with a potential project, they'd file an application. The city would review that project and see if the potential millage that's being proposed for that project is sufficient to cover all of the needs for that project. City council would pass a resolution determining sufficiency of the application, similar to what is on your agenda this evening. And that would set a date for a public hearing. You would publish notice about that public hearing. Then you'd have that public hearing, and any feedback along the way could be incorporated. And then if city council decides to move forward, they could vote to add that additional territory to the new community authority.
Questions?
Questions?
So I see your estimated collections here of 7.6 million. So what if the property values go down during, I mean, they could very well go down over that 30 years? So, so is this, is this set at the very beginning and then it doesn't change? Or if property values go down after 10 or 15 years, then that number is really going to come down, correct?
So the millage charge is derived from the property value. So if the property value goes down, the amount generated from the charge would also go down.
Okay.
The model incorporates a slight increase in property value on a triennial basis, as generally, real property values go up and not down. But it is tied to the property value.
Tammy, go ahead.
So two, two questions. So there's an empty lot in the city, that it applies to this?
It would only apply to the empty lot if the empty lot, if the owner of the empty lot came to city council asking for it to be added. So without any additional action of the owner and city council, that additional, that, that lot would not automatically be included in the authority.
This is a point, Councilwoman, where city policy about development starts to drive this tool. If you want to increase revenue, you may do individualized development deals with owners of lots. And you may work with your, you know, staff and economic development team to do that. And in the process, some of those lots may come into the community authority system. I think the base case for this is like Rockford and Highland Real Estate, right?
And that's what, that's what I was assuming too. I mean, we're trying to encourage building.
Yeah.
And so, second question. Other than the irony of, we also have the CRA that, you know, a new bill gets you out of paying your taxes for 10 to 15 years, depending how ironic, now you've got to pay this. Is there, what, what is the overlap of those two pieces?
In some cases, communities use the CRA and CAA tool together. There's a couple of examples of that. Another community that does that is Franklin, Ohio. The, what a, what a community can do, ultimately, you all are in control of tax abatement. And you all are in control of property tax assessments. And you all are in control of, and of other tools, like TIF and other things. And so if you offer a tax abatement to the market, the market may or may not react to that. And the level of tax abatement may be relevant to how a market player decides to do, you know, new activity. What a community can do is say, "Well, we'll give a tax abatement, but in exchange, you need to come into the community authority." In other words, you may, instead of getting 100% tax abatement, the net effect of that might be 96, because we're going to have four mills on it.
But we currently have citywide CRA, correct?
That's correct.
So we already have that in place.
Now, your CRA here is a post-94 CRA, is that correct? You do agreements for all of your commercial and industrial properties?
Yeah, well, the residential one that we had...
Is automatic.
Yeah.
Yeah. So CRA splits between residential and commercial. Residential is automatic, essentially. You apply for it, you get it. Whereas commercial, which tends to be things like multifamily apartments, or hotel, or anything else like that, we see around here. anything else like that, we see around here, that's on commercial. There, those property owners must enter into an agreement with the city in order to get the tax abatement. So that's where you have a bit of a policy point or a leverage point to drive development revenue the way that you like.
Mrs. Woods, that point on the commercial, the multifamily homes is the thing that Mr. Gotti talked about at the last council meeting that we would be coming back to. It wouldn't be one of those automatic, the multifamily.
Not an automatic one, yeah, that's right.
Over to you next.
So two questions then, do we need to create the policy as we're putting in this system, this, this NCA? So does the NCA put that policy change into place?
It's a strong signal of where your, your policy goals are. I, I would say capital P, formal policy, I'm not sure that that's the goal of the exercise. I think rather having the tool available and then pushing people to the benefit of the tool in exchange for perhaps infrastructure contributions or more favorable development parameters for that, more of a soft policy. Does, does that make sense?
Yeah, and my second question, don't start.
To that question, I think we typically rely on ADF to design our abatements, and I think they have pretty standard procedures for how they do that. They take into account construction costs, plus potential revenue generated, plus potential income tax, and then they come up with a number. So I would almost argue that we lean on ADF's policy for abatements.
And then question number two, it says examples of community facilities, it says parks and other open space land. So can you make park improvements, or can you only use those dollars to acquire land? Because we have a little pot of money that we already have to acquire land, but we cannot make improvements with that pot of money, so.
That's interesting. So with your pot of money, you, you may have more restrictions than the community authority statute. The community authority statute would allow you to buy a license, buy an easement, buy ground. You could also build a building, maintain the building, operate the building.
Could we put in a swing?
Yeah.
Okay, that's, thanks. Or snow cups, you know.
Absolutely.
Shh.
Do you want a swing?
So, yeah.
I just wanted to know.
Playing this week, but. So can the east, could the Eastern Star expansion be included in this, or has that train left the station?
Eastern Star, help, help me with that.
It's a, they're putting in a.
Like ninety-some units?
They're putting in ninety-some units. It's a, Eastern Star is a, it's an OPA, so senior, senior living facility, and then part to a continuum of care with independent living options that will then feed into the
assistive.
Higher care, assisted living.
They, yeah.
They start.
I mean, they've started, ground is moving and.
Sewage is going in.
I, I guess.
It's, it's possible that it, with their consent, that they would come in. I, I suppose if I were them, I would say, what do I get?
Especially at this late day.
But yeah, it's always, it's always possible.
So I guess right along with that then, so these other two developments that were, that have been noted in here have not grown yet, so this is still obviously something that can be done there.
So if I could, we've got a few more minutes. Rob, you reviewed this ordinance, correct? Everything's cop a sync? Question, next meeting, I was trying to read in the notes that Jeff left me, is there going to be legislation for the next meeting?
I will do legislation, but we don't need to pass it till the following.
Do I need a committee meeting next legislation, next meeting? Thank you. Mr. Scott, you've been listening to all this, and you're the mayor of the money, is this all good with you?
I said it on several community meetings in the background, so yeah.
Thank you. We can't start the, the other meeting for three more minutes, so questions, more questions? Did you get your questions answered?
I did, thank you.
Thank you. You have three more minutes, or we sit here and look at each other.
How many classes did you guys have take before you stopped saying Burger and Eckler?
A few. I, I worked at Burger and Eckler for sixteen years, so it was hard to start to say great, but I started in October past year, so it's, it's hard for me.
Nice post office, you're.
Oh, it's beautiful building. Yeah, I'll tell you a real, true, a true story about that building. I took the bar, the bar exam, or the bar swearing in ceremony they do at the Ohio Theater. My grandfather came down, my grandfather was a World War II vet, and he walked through, the building looked bad, showed him where my office was. He goes, oh, I signed up for the Navy right over there. And he pointed to the, to the corner conference room, it used to be the federal building, and that's where the fellows would go when they signed up. He was seventeen when he signed up for the Navy, so he passed two years ago, but I always remember that story. I love that building for that reason.
Is Kimball Carey still there?
Kimball's retired, but he still writes the book, the education book. Nice to see you all.
Thank you. Close that committee, and I think I got two minutes. Are you the one here for Farmers Co-op? You're fine, just give it a second. Kind of figured that. What's your name? Jamison? Rob, am I correct? Public hearings on both these pieces of legislation or just one? Which one?
It's, it's one hearing on both of these.
One on both, that's what I thought. Didn't want to get corrected halfway down the line.
Yeah, right here in the front seat. Oh, the dinner? That's true, I really should have ordered a pizza. I forgot that we had this community meeting.
I want lobster.
The meeting's over about the same time, it just starts a little early. See, it's all good. We'll get home, we'll stick it home quarter night.
Yes, that's fine, but this meeting, where we have this huge space of time. I joked about ordering a pizza.
I want a lobster too.
Where we can get a lobster in this, well, I guess the Outdoors has a really good lobster roll, so.
Okay, it's six forty-five. We're going to move now to the public hearing on the Lower Street, West Vine Street area, and planning, with planning and zoning, Mr. Hey.
Thank you, Mr. President. Council, this is ordinance twenty twenty-three twenty-one, twenty twenty-three twenty-two. This is Central Ohio Co-op. The first piece of legislation is to vacate a portion of Lewis Street and South Alley, and I believe that's between Vine and Gambier. And the other piece of legislation is to amend the zoning classification of a parcel, also known as six hundred West Vine Street, from the present zoning of R two, single and two-family district, to general business, and I'd like to, I'll have to move to adopt both of those tonight. Sir, if you come to the podium and give your name and what you're doing here would be great.
I'm Jamison Price, I'm the manager at the local Central Ohio Farmers Co-op here in town, been here for five years. What we're trying to do is expand a little bit. We need to replace some equipment, put a new grain scales in, much like you were talking about with your squads, we're looking out, it's going to take us a year to get a scales. Equipment, I don't quite understand why we stopped building stuff, but you cannot get anything anymore right now for a year, two year out. It's ridiculous, but we would like to move our grain scales, our new one over and put it on Lewis Street to make, for a big thing would be safety. The transition we have now, where our grain scale is on the south side of Gambier Street, makes a blind corner to come across to enter the pit when we cross Gambier Street. And it's hard for the drivers and the farmers coming in, they're looking right back at about a sixty-degree angle to make sure there's no traffic coming. And we would like to tighten up our grain operations uptown. That's what we're looking to do with this. We already own both properties on the west side of Lewis Street, and, and there's some future possibility of expansion, we may look at putting grain bins over on the empty lots, but that's farther down the road. That's basically the Cliff Notes version of what we're looking to do. You can tell I'm not into politics much.
Neither am I. You guys have been down there a long time.
I think we're closing on a hundred years.
Yeah. You have bucks?
Before Farmers Co-op, it was Farmers Exchange, and we tried to be good stewards for the city, and we want to stay in the city. It's not our goal to move out of the city. It's our intention to support the city and stay there and provide jobs and work with it, but we just would like to try and tighten up, well, part of it's security too. We've been having a lot of vandalism done. We would like to be able, where we could get it tighter and fence it in for safety, and that's kind of the gist of it.
How many employees do you have right now?
We have fifteen in Mount Vernon.
And then do you think this, any of this would change and increase or anything?
It has the potential to increase, but it has more of a potential to save. Because in a way, the amount of money we're looking to put in at this facility, we could move out to Clinton Township and start over. That's not our intention, that's not our one, but it's more of trying to save, stay of our people's jobs and stay where we're at. Our customers want us where we're at. They don't want to have to transition through town, go back out and go out hardcore. They want to come in, get in, get out.
Are your employees seasonal or, or they're year-round?
I have pretty much, I have three part-time people, but they work full-time pretty much. Agriculture's turning into be a full-time job, it's, it's just the way the weather's changing, the seasonals, it's just, it's very challenging. I'm getting ready to look to retire. Eight more years, which will probably be twelve by then.
If, this is a public hearing, does anyone have questions before I see if there's anybody else who wants to speak? All right.
Thank you.
Did you have something anywhere? I can have you come back if needed. Is there anybody else to speak on behalf of this? Is there anybody here that would like to speak against this happening with the vacation and also the?
Zoning.
Zoning. Okay? Now what do you want to do?
Mike, do you want me to speak in general?
Brian, unless it has something to do with this, no. Does it?
Sure.
All right, the normal questions you would ask, we have looked at utilities, Lewis Street does not have any city utilities, there is a small piece of sewer on South Alley, but again, if they move the scales, they're probably going to add a waste station, which would need the sewer. The one thing that is difficult to see, this site is served by the railroad. If they move over to Clinton Township and they're out of town, then there's no chance of hauling grain by the rail. I think, I don't know, I can't speak, but a lot of products go, at least the corn goes to Koshakton County, so if we move it, if it moves out of town, it would be coming into town, being put in a grain bin, and then hauled back to twenty-nine or thirty-six to Koshakton County. So we do support this with the idea that there is an option for rail when that market and things work to use the rail. That does save quite a bit of trucks, so we like this location, our department supports the project, it doesn't make sense.
Thank you. You did mention the sewer line. If there's an issue, are we able to get to it?
Yeah, the South Alley, we open from Adam Street, so we would, we'd have full access to the.
So that they wouldn't build directly over it?
No.
No, it's not our intention to be built directly over it, but the end of it, where it hit Lewis Street, there would be a scale there, so where the sewer connection would be back farther.
Yeah, at this point, the sewer dead ends in South Alley does not extend into Lewis Street, so the scale could be installed without any modifications.
And there was no opposition, this was an initial plan, incorrect?
Nope.
I think it's.
That great big sewer line that came from Cooper's, they went through, that had.
It's on the east side of the bins.
Right, so the last plan that, that, I don't know, Jamison, if you were here, the Farmers Co-op did look at expanding to the east, and that is, they would, you have the railroad, and then you have, you know, that area, the sewer, that large aqueduct is to the east of the train tracks. So they did previously look at an expansion to the east, but just sending the grain bins on that aqueduct would require an enormous amount of structural engineering and cost that is not profitable. So that, I don't know if you were, you probably weren't.
That was pre-me.
Yeah, but that was a previous plan. The other thing this does, probably a year before I started, where the trucks are leaving the scale, they drive over the aqueduct loaded, that actually collapsed, if you remember that. Cameron worked with them, and they did a complete repair of the aqueduct under West Gambier Street because it did collapse. Good question.
It was a big one.
Yeah. You could probably get, maybe this is a little convertible through that, really wanted to try.
You don't want to speak too, we have a lot of time.
I'm going to go relieve, so you let Phil answer.
Mr. Hey, you still have twenty-seven more minutes. I wasn't the one that said have thirty minutes, have a thirty-minute meeting.
Okay, well.
But it is a public hearing. Anybody else, I mean, I, I'm for it, I can't see why, why not? I didn't realize it was a hundred, knew it'd been there a long time.
It's closing in. If you go back to the days of Farmers Exchange, all the way back.
Used to go with my dad and my grandpa a lot to Farmers Exchange and. Wayne Cash Grain and.
And hopefully we're setting it up for another hundred years.
I think that this is a positive thing in the city to demonstrate our commitment to the agricultural areas in the surrounding county, so I'm very much for this.
If there's any, just, if there's anything to give you some spectrum to this, we own the facility, it used to be the movers and chuckers grain in Fredericton. To give you a perspective on the, that is a two-point-five million bushel facility, okay? The Mount Vernon grain facility is three hundred and twenty-four thousand. All right? Looking at those numbers, Mount Vernon grain averages about one point nine billion bushels of grain per year. The customers in Knox County do not want to go to Fredericton. They want to come here, get in and get out. So there's a lot of grain that goes through this facility. It's sometimes internally, everybody thinks of Mount Vernon Grain, it's the little grain facility, but if you look at the numbers, the Mount Vernon Grain Facility is larger than Mount Gillian's. It's almost as large as Armanet Grain Facility, and it closes in Oklahoma. And it's, it's just a little jewel, and it's really the community that supports it.
So you did mention fence, please make sure you work with zoning and all that.
Oh, yeah, we're not going to do anything, I mean, there's a lot, this is step one, but we do have surprising amount of vandalism.
What are your, on, doesn't surprise you, what's your immediate plan then, if this is passed, to block, you just could put barricades across it for now, or?
That is the bigger question right now, I've worked with safety and engineering and stuff on that as we move forward, but then again, see, we won't be able to have a scale positioned till next year. So this is a year that probably nothing will change.
So you, you think you'll keep it open till then?
I see no reason for us to close it immediately.
I guess that's something you'll work with them on, Brian? We don't want to become a safety issue either, we're.
No, and it's not our intention to cause any issue with fire or anything, safety going through it either.
Rob, is there a, a legal piece to this, when we vacate a street that would, I mean, do we want to close it so there's not an issue?
Well, once, well, once we vacated, it is closed, it's their street. It's their property, they can decide what to do with it, they can choose to block it off or not. So once council passes the legislation, it's just, it's private property again, and it'll be what they choose to do with it.
Mr. President, unless anybody else has anything, I moved to close this meeting, and then if we reopen it if somebody else comes in.
Is there one question? What are you doing about vandalism, how are you going to help prevent some of that?
That's a challenge. We continually try to lock equipment tighter, barricade, ladders, cameras, just security-like extended presence. Our employees drive through facilities at odd hour times, I know I spend a lot of time up here zipping around looking at stuff, but there's not getting in. But there's not been any here today. Actually, I'm hoping you'll pass this just for the safety factor for our employees. Lewis Street is almost a little bit like a drag strip. There's a lot of amount of people that zoom up and down through there, even through South Alley. And it's hard when we have employees walking through, we're dropping trucks of fertilizer, grain trucks, they weave in around. And it's, it's a challenge doing business in some respects. But the whole vandalism part, I've talked to the city police, it's just, I don't know what else to do. One day we came in, just being brutally honest with you, before harvest last year, if my employee would not have looked at our equipment before powering it up, somebody had took the boot off the leg lid and dumped a concrete block down into our grain lot, our receiving grain lot. If we would have powered up, we would have been out of business. So this is the weird things that are happening. But when I started five years ago, we really didn't have it. It's mainly been in the last twelve months, eighteen months.
When we're feeling vandalism in parks and, and the children's garden of the, of the career center, we're feeling it all over and I'm, I'm just frustrated by it.
Well, it's, it's just money. I mean, whether it's the city spending money to fix things like that or our spending money to fix equipment here, it's just, I don't understand the thinking behind it, what people are doing.
I don't either. I mean, what do you gain from it?
Nothing.
Just have to catch a minute.
Okay, I'll, I'll go along with a adjournment until, when we're just here in, in partial recess. If somebody comes in and wants to talk about it before seven-fifteen, we'll reopen it.
I have seven o'clock. Thank you.
I'm going to call the legislative portion of the June 26th meeting of Mount Vernon City Council to order. Mr. Hill, please call the roll.
Mr. Severns.
Here.
Mr. Mahan.
Here.
Mrs. Woods.
Here.
Ms. Keener.
Here.
Mr. Hillier.
Here.
Mrs. Seavolt.
Here.
We are in session. The invocation this evening will be given by Pastor Jill Tate from Miracle Life Ministries. Please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the pledge. Pastor?
Heavenly Father, thank you so much for this beautiful day. And Lord, we just thank you, dear God, for the ones you have put into position. We ask your blessings upon them. And we ask heavenly Father for protection upon them in the mighty name of Jesus and our mayor. And Father God, we thank you for guiding their decisions, Lord, in your path, in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Counselor, in your packets were the minutes from the June 12th meeting. Are there any additions or corrections? If not, I'd ask for motion for approval.
So move.
Second.
They're moving second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. They are approved. Mr. Hill, any petitions or communications?
There are none.
Counselor, in your packet were the committee reports. I see no liquor control licenses or proclamations. And I see no one wanting to speak on matters of public concern. Is that correct? Okay, well then we'll move in the legislative portion of the meeting. Mr. Hill, I ask that you read these by title and only number only this evening. Counsel, are there any additions or corrections to the agenda as presented? We did have one addition earlier today, but it's in your packet. If that being said, I'll assume it's approved by consensus. And the first resolution is for third reading. That's resolution number 2023-53. Mr. Hill.
Resolution number 2023-53. A resolution amending the city of Mount Vernon's designated outdoor refreshment area signage and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Hillier.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to adopt resolution 2023-53, please.
Second.
They're moving second to adopt this resolution. Any discussion?
Thank you. Counsel, Lacy Philkins is here. And she brought the president of the board along with her. So I feel that we should give him a few minutes to speak. Cheers. I know he doesn't get off to wear his jacket all the time, so don't get him on camera.
I can always wear a t-shirt. No matter how many of you there are. Thank you for a chance to answer questions. Was asked to see actual examples, I believe, of what we're proposing for sidewalk decals. Less conspicuous, they'd be down on the ground. So walking traffic would see them as they approached the barrier. They would be permanent, they would be down. This idea was borrowed from Westerville. Worcester has the same thing. Cincinnati downtown has something similar. Currently, for the last nine events that we've had, we've used temporary signage like this that marks the area. And as you can see, even though we've weighted these with sandbags, you know, they'd be at the end of each of the barriers. The wind could blow it over. Somebody could move it. As you're driving by, you can see that there's an event with refreshments going on. So it's visible to people driving by versus something for just the foot traffic. So it's cleaner. It's got a QR code which we can add to these signs. But it just seemed to be a little bit better for the aesthetic of downtown and the experience. So questions about signs?
So in reading the legislature, the literature on them, there, it does appear it's more of a temporary sign that's going to have to be replaced possibly. There was months they said it would last on the sidewalk. I assume that would be due to how much snow, salt, whatever. That would be your cost to pick them up?
Westerville said theirs last about a year.
They have it down for 18 months.
18 months, and they're still in good shape there, so.
And you're putting them down, not the city of Mount Vernon?
We'll work with the street department to make sure they're sold correctly. But otherwise, yeah.
Because I know our guys are pretty busy. Counsel, Mr. Mahan.
Yeah, thank you. And maybe it was just my perception, but I felt like that when Lacy first brought this a couple of meetings ago, that there was significant negative feelings towards the chain of sign there. And there are other things in Dora that, when it was voted in the first time, and I wasn't on council at that time, but there was some confusion. So I want to make, I did have an amendment to offer. And I did communicate with Lacy via email. And I believe we had, I asked if you would be amendable to something that was maybe temporary just to see how this would go. And I hope that would, that would allow for counsel to have an opportunity to reflect, see the signs on the sidewalk and have the community a chance to reflect on that. But then it would not become permanent as was in the legislation. So you have your, and I provided the amendment. And thank you also, Mr. Bronner, for help with the wording on this. But that this new legislation would be temporary. And that until May 31, under section one, until May 31, exhibit B is replaced in its entirety by the attached exhibit B, which would be the legislation we're voting on tonight. On June 1, 2024, exhibit B would revert back to the old legislation. Section two, no later than April 30, 2024, council shall hold a meeting to review the effects, the use of the permanent versus temporary signage to do on the Dora boundary. So my hope is that we can respect the work and effort of experience, Mount Vernon, but yet also have a chance to review this after the 2023 season. Now, at this point, I would like to move that this amendment be adopted.
Is there a second?
Second.
They're moving in second that the, this resolution, 2023-53, be amended in section one and two. Any discussion?
We discussed this prior. And something that's come to mind every time we've, well, the last few times we've talked about Dora. Does anybody know why we talked about Dora to begin with? COVID. It first came up because of COVID. We're now going to allow people to bring their meals outside, their their drinks outside. Does anyone remember that conversation? People, because you were only allowed so many people inside, and this was going to help the downtown businesses in that area. I don't think that's happened a whole lot. I haven't, other than Flappers always had theirs in place. And it's expanded to this, which I understand that is what Dora's for as well. But it's kind of funny thinking back that this COVID's fallen again. I've brought up more than once about the fact that I want to protect First Fridays from this. I appreciate you not doing it the June 1st Friday. I don't really like the signs on the sidewalk. They do look a little better than your wafer board thing there. And I understand the labor involved with your temporary signs. So I'm torn between either voting this down. I understand it's a $700 investment. I'm sorry you had to do that. Or to agree to do this and add to the legislation to amend it, to also read that there be no Dora event during any First Friday, because that was always verbal, and also add to that that Dora hours are restricted to an event hours only. And I don't know if that's exactly how you want to say it, but my purpose there is, is let's say Flappers Bike Night that's coming up, and I don't know her, the hours, I don't want to be quoted as the hours, I'm not sure, but let's say it's from 6:00 to 11:00. I don't want to see an event hour be stretched to, from noon that day to 11 o'clock that night. Does that make sense to you? Because now we're talking, you can walk out of Flappers Bike Night and carry your drink anywhere inside that Dora area.
I have not, this is the first I've heard of this, but I am going to jump in here and say that based upon the reading about the way that we can't change the size of the Dora event per individual event, I think that changing the time for an individual event rather than for the entire thing will probably also not fly.
It's fine with votes, no?
I'm just sort of.
That's all right. If that's, we either postpone it.
Concerned that somebody else may come along and, like Baxter's, isn't part of the Bike Night, and they may start serving drink, Dora drinks at noon.
At one time, we were approached, when Anthony was here, when he asked, we asked him to postpone this. The goal of the Downtown Association at the time was to expand the hours for certain days, and anybody can chime, you were here, but it was like they wanted to go Dora boundary-wide from like Thursday, Friday, and Saturday from noon till 10 or 11. All right? So since, the way I'm looking at it is, since Flappers, you can now take a drink from Flappers Bike Night, and I don't like, but it is, they're having a Bike Night sometime in July, I saw they had. You can now take a drink from Flappers Bike Night and walk down Main Street with it, where, when we voted in this legislation in 2021, that's not what we thought. All right?
Just a point of order, though, Mike. We're not discussing the legis, the.
We're talking about, we're talking about whether or not we should vote for his amendment.
Amendment, right.
And my agreement to voting yes for his amendment was I got to add this amendment. That's why I had the discussion of the amendment.
He wants to amend the amendment.
Or add to it.
You're talking, amending the amendment. Okay, I'm with you now.
So according to Rob, I can't do it, so it's.
Well, no, no. This is the first you've discussed this with me.
There's reasons why.
And so the, I'm not, I'm not sure about the ability to change the times based upon what they've told us about changing the area. I don't know that for a fact because we have not asked that question or had the ability to research it, so.
What you're saying, so Kevin Michie files an application for this Dora event for a Bike Night to raise money for Salvation Army. He applies for the hours of 6:00 to 11:00. You're correct. Nobody before 6:00 o'clock can serve a Dora event.
Are we sure?
Yeah, because that's the event.
Because of how our legislation reads.
That's the Dora application.
Because our legislation is event-based, we approve Dora events based on the time.
What you're worried about is not even a thing, actually.
Yeah.
Mr. Warren?
Well, okay, so I'm still trying to, you know, when you do this like this, it makes it difficult. So, because I'm thinking, so we can only hold Dora events within these times, so.
Which we have outlined in our legislation.
Yeah, and so, but then the events.
The event applications are what determines the actual time of the event.
Right.
So that's probably correct. Yes.
Probably.
We, we don't, it's not just anything.
There are protections in there for just what you're describing.
Yeah, we don't, we don't allow Dora events any day, anytime. We only, our, our current legislation only allows Dora events Thursdays through Saturdays, and they have to be held sometime within the hours of 11:00 a.m. and 11:00 p.m., I believe. And no timeouts out of that. So if someone applies for a Dora event that is a different day or time than what is in our legislation, we deny it. And we, no one has applied to have an all-day Dora event. So even events that are taking place all day, typically they apply for a three- or four-hour period. That would be Dora.
So counsel, that takes care of the first concern. So that would not need to be added to this amendment. Your second concern was First Friday. And, you know, I had arranged this before to have it, the wording outlined. Mr. Warren, would we, where would we put something in an amendment? Would there be a Section 5?
Well, I would probably suggest that each of the two provisions that Mr. Hillier is suggesting would each have their own separate sections, and then that would just move the last part down.
Well, you're saying, I don't need the one. They just said I wouldn't need the one about the hours.
So we just need to put the one in, and that there'd be no Doras on the First Fridays.
So if I want to amend his amendment, where would you suggest I put, to read there will not be a Dora event during any First Friday?
Can I see?
I have a hard copy here. Can I just ask a question? Are you, are you planning right now for the remaining First Fridays to have Dora events?
No, we're not.
So then are we needing this amendment?
I feel we do, because all we had was a verbal before, and that president, chair of the Downtown Association moved on.
Well, I would just encourage you, if that's your motivation, is to protect a First Friday, and that's what you're going to write in, there's nothing to stop me and my organization from hosting a private event and making a Fourth Friday, or a different event to, I don't know why this one specific event that we put on is different than any other event that we put on.
Part of the discussion? Go ahead.
I worked on First Fridays for about eight to 10 years, was chair. I saw how First Fridays was family-friendly, a lot of little kids. I saw where if there was a beer event, it was off to the side in a private area such as Stein, that if you wanted to have beer, you went to that private area, and families didn't have to be involved. And I'd just like to see it stay off of Main Street during First Fridays. Personal opinion.
Okay. There's a lot of decisions we have to put into those events, the music, the food that we offer, anything somebody could pick and choose to say that doesn't fit with what I think First Friday is. Nobody's more protective of those events. In the time that we've put in planning them, you've been there, Mike, you know. If there was ever even a glimpse of an issue caused by Dora, who do you think's going to be the first person to pull the plug? I am. It's our responsibility. This is our event that we're planning and putting together to try to draw foot traffic downtown to support our small businesses and the merchants, give exposure to the people from the county who come to set their tables up and capture the people walking by. There's a reason places like the zoo, family-friendly place, sell beer. There's a reason you can go to a ballgame with my kids and my boys and buy a beer. There's a reason I offer a kids' menu at the Alcove, to accommodate somebody else who's coming, to make it easier for the people who are there. If this doesn't work, no one's going to pull the plug on us. Similar to the signage, I think that there's an effort here. We've never done it on a First Friday. This was supposed to be a trial run to see, did it deter people away? Did they not like it? Did it make an issue downtown? Did it cause something that we weren't expecting with all of the hours of planning and what-if-ing and figuring out, what would this do to an event like this? But we don't even know that. We've had nine of these events, and there's been no issues. The police have come and said that, you know. It's not causing a problem. There's not other communities rushing to you saying, our community did Dora, and these are all the issues we're having downtown because of it. Don't do it. Don't do it. If we can find specific examples like that, I'm going to be the first one to agree with you, because we don't want to ruin our events that way. It's too vital down there. But also, it's also a tool for events and to formulate things on a random Thursday night or a random Saturday, it would be people downtown, shopping, supporting these businesses, coming out, raising money for fundraisers.
I'm not talking about Thursday or Saturday. The amendment I'm asking for is not to have a Dora event at First Fridays.
Mr. Law Director? The way I'm seeing this is we should vote on the amendment that Jay has presented. And then, if we want to add another amendment after we've voted on this one, we could have a separate. It seems like First Friday and this aren't in sync.
Well, it, I mean, what, to make the record clear, that's the, we have an amendment on the table.
Right.
It's been seconded. And so if counsel can proceed to either allow Mr. Hillier to move to amend to add, or just to vote on the amendment and then move forward with Mr. Hillier's.
That's what I would do. And I'd vote, move this up or down, and then have Mr. Hillier have a separate amendment. And so it's, that seems to be cleaner, because his doesn't seem to fit into this one to me.
So then I have to vote no, because I don't know if my amendment will fly, and that's why I did it the way I did it. I will say this.
Well, you can amend the amendment. I mean.
Yeah, I mean, this is counsel's ability to do that. You can do it one way or the other, you know. So you need to.
If you want to amend the amendment, go ahead.
Do you want it or didn't?
It'll be, what it'll be is, it will be Section 4, and this is the language that I think I'm hearing you say. It says that there'll be no Dora events during First Friday.
That's correct.
That will be Section 4, and then Section 5 will just be re, will just move down one.
Okay. The current Section 4 moves to 5.
Yeah.
And we put no First Fridays as.
Section 4.
Okay.
So is that the amendment you were asking to?
There'll be no Dora event during First Fridays.
So we have the amendment on the table. We need a second.
And we have an amendment to the member on the table.
Yeah, yeah, amendment to the amendment.
Yeah, second.
Okay, there's amendment to the amendment, discussion on the amendment to the amendment.
Well, it's not specific to the amendment, but I think everybody knows, I've been against Dora since this thing got brought up for this reason. Every time we have a discussion, there seems to be a new arm to it that can't be answered. So full disclosure, the only Dora thing that I would vote yes on would be to repeal it. I think it's just a bad idea. I know you've had no issues to date. It is not the face of Mount Vernon I want for us.
Any other discussion on the amendment to the amendment? Mr. Hill?
Mr. Severns?
Yes, on the amendment to the amendment.
Mr. Mahan?
Yes.
Mrs. Woods?
No.
Ms. Keener?
No.
Mr. Hillier?
Yes.
Mrs. Seville?
Yes.
Okay, the amendment to the amendment passes, and now we're back to the amendment, and which is Section, basically Section 1 and 2, but it includes the First Friday portion because it was amended to the amendment. Any discussion on the amend, amendment as amended?
Mr. Hill? Mr. Severns?
No.
Mr. Mahan?
Yes.
Mrs. Woods?
No.
Ms. Keener?
Yes.
Mr. Hillier?
Yes.
Mrs. Seville?
Yes.
By a vote of four to two, the amendment is adopted. Now we're back to the legislation as amended, amended, which is Resolution Number 2023-Days-53, discussion on that, that resolution as amended.
Twice.
Thank you. That's all I got to say.
No other discussion? Mr. Hill?
Mr. Severns?
No.
Mr. Mahan?
Yes.
Mrs. Woods?
No.
Ms. Keener?
Yes.
Mr. Hillier?
Yes.
Mrs. Seville?
Yes.
By a vote of four to two, the Resolution 2023-Days-53 as amended twice is adopted.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you. Now we move to Resolution for second reading. That's Resolution Number 2023-Days-56. Mr. Hill?
Resolution Number 2023-Days-56, a resolution authorizing the Safety Service Director to advertise for bids and enter into contract for the Buckeye Edition Water Lines Project and declaring an emergency.
Mrs. Woods?
Thank you, sir. I move to suspend the rules requiring three separate readings and take Resolution 2023-Days-56 to its third and final reading.
Second.
If they're moving second for the suspension of the rules, any discussion on the suspension? Mr. Hill?
Mr. Severns?
Yes.
Mr. Mahan?
Yes.
Mrs. Woods?
Yes.
Ms. Keener?
Yes.
Mr. Hillier?
Yes.
Mrs. Seville?
Yes.
The rule is suspended. Mrs. Woods?
Thank you, sir. I move to approve Resolution 2023-Days-56.
Second.
They're moving in second for the adoption of this resolution. Any discussion? Mrs. Woods?
Thank you. So we had a good committee meeting on this. I know there's some questions. Want to make sure everybody's questions got answered. We will put into place what we need to within the Utilities Committee and maybe the agreements to make it happen that folks won't have to pay just because a water line goes in front of their house. And this, is it hostile? We'll, we'll make sure that gets taken care of. But I want to make sure everybody's questions got answered. I want to, Brian, thank you for arranging for grants to pay for this. That meant a lot. Thank you. Any other questions for Brian before we vote, or comments on this?
Any other discussion?
Just, Brian, thank you for the time. That's a huge grant that we got to cover this, and thank you for being willing to work with counsel on our desire to take out that extra fee. So I appreciate that.
I'm absolutely in favor of talking about the health situation with the people with the wells and the opportunity to hook up to city water. General Director's saying, I think that's the most important thing we do, is put clean water in and bring the brown water out, and to have more people with the opportunity to hook that up. I'm absolutely in favor.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? Mr. Hill? Mr. Severns?
Yes.
Mr. Mahan?
Yes.
Mrs. Woods?
Yes.
Ms. Keener?
Yes.
Mr. Hillier?
Yes.
Mrs. Seville?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted. Next resolution is Resolution Number 2023-Days-58. Mr. Hill?
Resolution Number 2023-Days-58, a resolution accepting the recommendations of the 2023 Knox County Tax Incentive Review Council concerning parcels of commercial real property in the city of Mount Vernon receiving tax exemption for purposes, purposes of economic development and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Hillier?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to give Resolution 2023-58 a first reading. And Mr. Scott, would you like to review this with us for about 10 minutes in the next meeting?
Sure.
Thank you. This resolution receives this for free. Next resolution is Resolution Number 2023-Days-59. Mr. Hill?
Resolution Number 2023-Days-59, a resolution authorizing and directing the auditor of the city of Mount Vernon to make supplemental appropriations.
Mrs. Seville?
Thank you. I would like to suspend the rules requiring three separate readings and take Resolution Number 2023-Days-59 to its third and final reading.
Second.
They're moving in second for the suspension of the rules. Any discussion on the suspension? Mr. Hill?
Mr. Severns?
Yes.
Mr. Mahan?
Yes.
Mrs. Woods?
Yes.
Ms. Keener?
Yes.
Mr. Hillier?
Yes.
Mrs. Seville?
Yes.
The rule is suspended. Mrs. Seville?
Thank you. I move to adopt Resolution Number 2023-Days-59.
Second.
They're moving in second for the adoption of this resolution. Any discussion? Mrs. Seville?
Thank you. Looks like we have some grants coming in, and we need to close them up and take that money and put it somewhere, huh?
Thank you, Mrs. Seville. That's a good analysis, and counsel, thank you for taking the time to allow me to amend this at a late hour of this weekend, but it was necessary to do so for the J. Grant. Starting off with item number one is first, you talked with the fire chief at the committee meeting earlier this evening, and so he talked to you about getting some hose, fire hose, and, and his grants that he got from the FEMA. So what we're going to do on item one for $24,000 is to get dollars back into his equipment line account that he pulled from to make his match on that grant as well. So we still have some resources that we have not yet appropriated from our original 2023 appropriations. These resources will then be up.
These resources will then be applied to the $24,000. Items two through 22 happens to be, and of course, you know, we've been around with J-Rig for so long, I've gone through about six years of J-Rig. Lo and behold, J-Rig has died. Not to be seen nor heard of again. Being replaced by the Community Corrections Act 2.0. Sounds like we're moving into the 23rd century, doesn't it? So anyhow, council, this is $119,627.80 that we are going to be appropriating for the latter six months. So, this is from July until December, for which the grant will continue on for another 12 months into 2024, and then another six months into 2025. And those will come about as those years and time periods come along as well. So anyhow, as we move on then, 2023 through 2028 is the last part of what the J-Rig is. And they had resources that had come into the treasury this year, but yep, yep, have put them in appropriations, and that's what this, these six items are going to be doing. We want to make sure that we maximize the utilization of these grants, and this is the mechanism that will get us there. And June 30th is the cutoff for J-Rig to exist anymore. So, thank you, Mrs. Seville. Counsel, do you have any questions in regards to this complicated but uncomplicated situation? Any discussion of this resolution? Mr. Hill.
Mr. Severance.
Yes.
Mr. Mahan.
Yes.
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
Mr. Hillier.
Yes.
Mrs. Seville.
Yes.
Resolution is adopted. That concludes the resolutions for this evening. We now move to ordinances. We have three ordinances for third reading. The first one is ordinance number 2023, dash 21. Mr. Hill.
Ordinance number 2023, dash 21, an ordinance to accept the vacation of a portion of Lewis Street and South Alley in the City of Mount Vernon, Knox County, Ohio, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Hillier.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to adopt ordinance 2023, 21, please.
Second.
They're moving in second for the adoption of this ordinance. Any discussion? Mr. Hillier.
Thank you. Counsel, we had our public hearing. We saw nobody opposed to this. I think it's good for the City of Mount Vernon. And I have nothing more to say.
Any other discussion? Mr. Hill.
Mr. Severance.
Yes.
Mr. Mahan.
Yes.
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
Mr. Hillier.
Yes.
Mrs. Seville.
Yes.
The ordinance is adopted. Next ordinance is ordinance number 2023, dash 22. Mr. Hill.
Ordinance number 2023, dash 22, an ordinance amending the zoning classification of parcel number 66, dash 00268.000, also known as 600 West Vine Street, from the present zoning of R2, single and two-family district, to GB, general business, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Hillier.
Thank you. Counsel, this is just, what I didn't say earlier, this just adds on to the general business in the area, also keeps a good business in town. Thank you.
You making a motion?
Oh, I did. Did you hear it?
No.
Moved to adopt ordinance 2023, 22 for the reasons I just stated.
Second.
They're moving in second for the adoption of this ordinance. Any discussion? Mr. Hill.
Mr. Severance.
Yes.
Mr. Mahan.
Yes.
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
Mr. Hillier.
Yes.
Mrs. Seville.
Yes.
The ordinance is adopted. Next ordinance is ordinance number 2023, dash 23. Mr. Hill.
Ordinance number 2023, dash 23, an ordinance establishing a zoning fee schedule pursuant to section 1153.14 of the zoning code and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Hillier.
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to adopt ordinance 2023, 23.
Second.
They're moving in second for the adoption of this ordinance. Any discussion? Mr. Hillier.
Mr. President, I need to amend this. Mr. Zick had asked me to add a couple items to one of the lines. If you go seventh line down, park development fee. Any alterations? Add after the word fences, comma sheds, comma signs. I need to make an amendment to do that.
Would, did you say comma sheds, comma signs?
Yes, there's two words.
And ramps stays in?
And everything else stays. I'm sorry?
Are we including ramps?
Everything else stays. Just add those two words, those two commas. So, I moved amend ordinance 2023, 23 to reflect that.
Second.
They're moving in second with this. This ordinance be amended. Any discussion on the amendment? Rick, is what you wanted it?
Yeah, I spoke with Lacy. It was an oversight. We typically collect park development fees on sheds and signs, and if we hadn't added that language, we would no longer be able to collect that.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Mr. Hill.
Mr. Severance.
Yes.
Mr. Mahan.
Yes.
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
Mr. Hillier.
Yes.
Mrs. Seville.
Yes.
The ordinance is amended. Now we, now we go back to the ordinance as amended. Any discussion on this ordinance? Mr. Hill.
Mr. Severance.
Yes.
Mr. Mahan.
Yes.
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
Mr. Hillier.
Yes.
Mrs. Seville.
Yes.
The ordinance is adopted as amended. Now I move to ordinances for second reading. The first one is ordinance number 2023, dash 24. Mr. Hill.
Ordinance number 2023, dash 24, an ordinance amending the zoning classification of parcel number 70, dash 00366.002 and parcel number 70, dash 0366.003, both also known as 1104 West Gambier Street, from the present zoning of Clinton Township LB, local business, to GB, general business. Parcel number 70, dash 00366.004, also known as 120 South Norton Street, from Clinton Township RRA, rural residential and agricultural, to GB, general business. And parcel number 70, dash 0366.005, also known as 130 South Norton Street, from Clinton Township GB, general business, to GB, general business, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Hillier.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to give ordinance 2023, 24, a second reading. There'll be a public hearing at their next meeting on July 10th.
This ordinance receives its second reading. Now we move to ordinance number 2023, dash 25. Mr. Hill.
Ordinance number 2023, dash 25, an ordinance to amend section 919.07 of the codified ordinances of the City of Mount Vernon regarding water charges and declaring an emergency.
Mrs. Woods.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to amend ordinance 2023, dash 25. In section one, item two, the bolded sentence there would be, a one-time fee of $75 will be charged prior to disconnection, which covers removing the meter and reinstating the meter when water and waste water service is resumed.
Is her second?
Second.
They're moving in second to amend this, this ordinance. Any discussion on the amendment?
So, I want to make it clear. So, section three is being eliminated, and I think the issue was, they were collecting this fee at the end, and the wording was attempting to make it so that that would be paid in advance, and when this came to us for the first reading, I thought it was a little squishy. Just wanted to kind of clean that up. So, prior to disconnection, we'll make that.
Any other discussion? Mr. Hill.
Mr. Severance.
Yes.
Mr. Mahan.
Yes.
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
Mr. Hillier.
Yes.
Mrs. Seville.
Yes.
The ordinance is amended. Now we're back to the ordinance as amended. Mrs. Woods.
So, I'd like to suspend the rules requiring three separate readings and take ordinance 2023, dash 25 to its third and final reading, please.
As amended.
As amended.
And second.
They're moving in second to, to suspend the rules. Any discussion on the suspension? Mr. Hill.
Mr. Severance.
Yes.
Mr. Mahan.
Yes.
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
Mr. Hillier.
Yes.
Mrs. Seville.
Yes.
The rule is suspended. Mrs. Woods.
Move to adopt ordinance 2023, dash 25, as amended.
Second.
They're moving in second for the adoption of this ordinance as amended. Any discussion? Mrs. Woods.
No, I think we talked that through quite, quite well. Thank you.
I think we've hit our limit on our amendments tonight.
Hey, pro temp has become questionable right now. I'll just say it after this meeting.
Mr. Hill.
Mr. Severance.
Yes.
Mr. Mahan.
Yes.
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
Mr. Hillier.
Yes.
Mrs. Seville.
Yes.
The ordinance is adopted as amended. Next ordinance is ordinance number 2023, dash 27. Mr. Hill.
Ordinance number 2023, dash 27, an ordinance amending resolution number 2021, dash 39 to change the circumstances under which certain community reinvestment area exemptions are offered in the City of Mount Vernon and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Hillier.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to give this a second reading. Counsel, I assume you want a 10-minute committee meeting on this next meeting. Thank you.
This ordinance receives a second reading. The next ordinance is ordinance number 2023, dash 28. Mr. Hill.
Ordinance number 2023, dash 28, an ordinance consenting to the annexation of 4.325 acres from Clinton Township into the City of Mount Vernon, providing for certain city services to the annex parcel and providing protections against incompatible uses under existing township zoning and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Hillier.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to suspend a rule for three separate readings and take ordinance 2023, 28 to the third and final reading, please.
Second.
They're moving in second for the suspension of the rules. Any discussion on the suspension? Mr. Hill.
Mr. Severance.
Yes.
Mr. Mahan.
Yes.
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
Mr. Hillier.
Yes.
Mrs. Seville.
Yes.
The rule is suspended. Mr. Hillier.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to adopt ordinance 2023, 28, please.
Second.
They're moving in second for the adoption of this ordinance. Any discussion? Mr. Hillier.
Thank you, Mr. President. Counsel, we had a nice meeting with previous Mayor Mavis. Fill us in on what this was all about. And we had this, I should have said earlier, the suspension of the rules because we had so many days we had to pass this one through. Got it? I have nothing else. Any other discussion?
Mr. Hill.
Mr. Severance.
Yes.
Mr. Mahan.
Yes.
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
Mr. Hillier.
Yes.
Mrs. Seville.
Yes.
The ordinance is adopted. Now move to ordinances for first reading. The first one is ordinance number 2023, dash 29. Mr. Hill.
Ordinance number 2023, dash 29, an ordinance accepting the annexation of 1.105.65 acres, parcel numbers 59, dash 02289.000 and 59, dash 02289.001, from Pleasant Township into the City of Mount Vernon and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Hillier.
Thank you, Mr. President. Give us a first reading and a 10-minute committee meeting. Maybe Mr. Boren can fill us in on what the council's position is on an annexation of this type. Thank you.
That ordinance receives its first reading. The final ordinance for this evening is one that was added today, which is ordinance number 2023, dash 30. Mr. Hill.
Ordinance number 2023, dash 30, an ordinance determining that a petition to establish the Mount Vernon New Community Authority District is sufficient and complies with the requirements of section 349.03 of the Ohio Revice Code in Form and Substance, setting the time and place for a hearing on the petition and authorizing the notice by publication of such hearing and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Hillier.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to suspend the rule for three separate readings and take ordinance 2023, 30 to its third and final reading.
Second.
They're moving in second for the suspension of the rules. Any discussion on the suspension? Mr. Hill.
Mr. Severance.
Yes.
Mr. Mahan.
Yes.
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
Mr. Hillier.
Yes.
Mrs. Seville.
Yes.
The rule is suspended. Mr. Hillier.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to adopt ordinance 2023, 30, please.
Second.
They're moving in second for the adoption of this ordinance. Any discussion? Mr. Hillier.
Counsel, we heard earlier with the lawyer why we're needing to do this. I assume you have no other questions at this point. Thank you.
Mr. Hill.
Mr. Severance.
Yes.
Mr. Mahan.
Yes.
Mrs. Woods.
Yes.
Ms. Keener.
Yes.
Mr. Hillier.
Yes.
Mrs. Seville.
Yes.
The ordinance is adopted, and that concludes the legislative portion of the meeting. We now move to comments and administration. Mayor Stark.
Thank you, Mr. President. Since I updated you last week, I have nothing to say.
Thank you. Mr. Zick.
I did want to mention one thing. I think most people here have probably seen the press release and the reporting by Knox pages in Mount Vernon News about the city's new port forward program starting July 1st. This entire program was developed by Christie Goldner. She was a customer support specialist in the water billing office, and eventually moved to be a support specialist in the cemetery. Despite moving, this is really a passion project of hers, which allows any utility customer to dedicate funds or do a roundup on their utility bill to help create a fund for people who can't pay their utility bills. So, I want to thank Christie for all the hard work she put on that, as well as Brad Cook in the billing office and all the rest of the billing office staff who really worked on that. That's all.
Thank you. Mr. Scott.
Nothing further, Mr. President.
Mr. Boren.
I have nothing. Thank you.
Mr. Severance.
Yes, a couple things. So, first of all, I'd like to mention that we do, we are going to basically enforce an ordinance on our signage around town that seems to be cropping up everywhere. And I appreciate the work that Rick has done and Rob on that to eventually get some enforcement of that code. I hope it'll clean it up a little bit. I want to remind residents that they cannot also post signs on telephone poles. They're everywhere right now and they seem to be going up even more in the last week. So those will be probably removed and that'll be good. The other thing I want to say, and I missed the last meeting, but I'd just like to publicly thank John Francis for his excellent and long-term public service here. One thing I respected a lot about John is that he always, his heart was for our city residents. And he knows, he knew that he was elected by the residents and he worked hard for them. And I just believe that he was a great example to me as a new council member coming on. And I just want to thank John for his service and we're going to miss him. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Hillier.
Thank you, Mr. President. Counsel, I hope none of you feel slighted tonight. Nine pieces of legislation out of 12. Thank you. This is getting a little old. We got at least one more meeting like that coming up. Thank you for your support. Mr. Zick and Man Brian's here as well. It's a good time to talk about this. I saw somebody complain on Facebook, we need to fix our brick streets. We put aside $200,000 this year for brick streets. I know we started doing some work. Where are we? Where are we heading? Are we broke? Are we planning on spending more?
I don't have the exact stats, but we've done, I think, three or four sections of Burgess. And then we have two more sections of ham ceramic under contract. We're just waiting for availability. And so we're trying to be low impact because those folks in those neighborhoods don't see a lot of construction. So it's kind of frustrating because we really have to take up the whole street to fix these. Because none of these are small. So that process is ongoing. As we see the grass slow down, we're probably going to bring on some lawn care companies in August. Try to put more crews out there. Right now, we really only have one crew. But I have two other crews that are interested when they're not mowing the grass. So do you know where the person is? Do they have a specific site? I mean, is something you can?
No, I just, I can tell you who the person is, but that doesn't matter.
Well, I mean, if it's something you want us to prioritize?
No, no, no. I just, it actually made me think. Because we hadn't talked about it for a while. Where are we, are we half through the money?
I don't know.
Don't have an idea?
I don't think so.
But is there any focus other than ham ceramic and Burgess?
Yeah. So the other thing separately of that pot of money, we have signed a contract with Smith Paving to do our citywide stormwater improvement. So we are going to, one of the focus areas is Center Street, where we have, you have to go down, come back up, go down. And we got a lot of comments from the folks on Edgewood. Hey, why do people only drive on Edgewood? Well, depending on the type of car, you can't drive on Center Street. So Center Street is a planned thoroughfare. We're going to work on fixing those areas. And then we're going to go on the south side of Vine Street from Center Street to Center Run and replace that failed curb and gutter. Because that, the street, Vine Street is not filled. But as the curb and gutter breaks, you know, bricks are coming loose and they're being swept into the river. So we're going to do work on a section of that. We're considering doing a change order for Smith. The street department has asked us to do the curb on North Main Street from where they finished their intersection project of Five Point. We may do the curb on one side of North Main Street as an add to Smith's projects. And my team is designing that right now. They're going to bring a curb machine in and it'll be really efficient. North Catherine, too. Well, yeah, north, three blocks of North Catherine are under a separate contract for Smith. Completely replacement. So brick streets are a pretty hot priority.
That wasn't out of that $200,000.
No, completely different. That's federal funds. So we have three projects focusing on brick streets that are ongoing.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mrs. Skeener.
After spending a big portion of last week speaking to anyone and everyone regarding the cancellation of fitness classes at Aerial Foundation Park, I would like to say that I personally think that this was a poor decision made by the management of the park. Having personally coordinated this program in previous years while I was employed by MVAC, I can attest to the minimal effort which it requires to coordinate this program. Yet, given that the city of Mount Vernon continues to have no vote on the AFP Conservancy Board, I would urge them to look at continuing to make partnerships to utilize the park. But I'd also like to use my voice to promote other opportunities which have been made available by the city. So thanks to Mike Miller, a private citizen, the lake at AFP has been restocked and will have fish. For those who enjoy the activity and for the PAC United event, sorry, that is later this week on Thursday from 3:00 to 5:00. There are also fitness classes which will begin after July 4th for men, women, and children at Memorial Park. Specific thanks goes out to Tanner Saliers, who was willing to put in hard work and pivot when I kicked him this idea of doing fitness in the city parks earlier than we had anticipated. Speaking of 4th of July, be sure to head out to Aerial Foundation Park, where that will be happening on the 4th of July. If you are wanting to enjoy some free concerts, you can head on over to 601 East High for the Summer Front Porch Concert Series from 6:00 to 9:00 o'clock on June 30th. That will feature Side Effects and Six Miles to Nelly. So really thanks to those in our community who have worked to create great programs. The Parks and Recreation Board will continue to announce more opportunities in the coming weeks. First Friday is next Friday, July 17th. And that's all. Thank you so much, Mr. President.
Mrs. Seville.
Thank you. I just want to say have a safe and fun 4th of July and don't set off fireworks and get hurt. Just enjoy watching them. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Woods.
Thank you, sir. I'll communicate this with the chief, too. I was hoping to see him tonight. But we've developed what I'll call some drag racing on Cusackton Avenue in the middle of the night. I can hear it pretty darn loud. And I can't get it down to specific nights, but it's happening. And it's multiple cars. You can hear tires spilling, they're taking off and they're drag racing down there. So before somebody gets hurt, just thought somebody might want to know that's going on.
Can you give me really quick, is there a typical time that you're noticing?
11:00.
I was going to say midnight-ish. It's usually pretty darn dark and most of the traffic's gone. No, no, I mean, it can be, it can be as late as 2:00 a.m., but you can hear it really loud.
I would note that the chief, the chief has now assigned an officer to do traffic enforcement on the overnight shifts. So that should be something we should be able to.
I just don't need somebody, you know, walking home. There's still people walking home from work that time of night. Mayor, this would have been a perfect night for your students to be here for a primer in Robert's Rules Order for the amendment to the amendment of the suspension of an ordinance. So wow.
For eternity now. Thanks for your, for you, council members.
And then if I could, I've had some questions about this. Can we get a 20-minute committee meeting next? And Brian, if you could be here, this is about retention pond at Compass Point. Okay.
That's my neighborhood.
We give you the second meeting in July.
Okay. Okay.
Yep, and we're going to, I'm going to meet on Thursday.
Okay. If we could, thank you. That's all.
Mr. Mayhem.
Yeah, I want to thank the police officers, the firemen who have come out to PAC United for the, I was president of the kickball. And I understand that the dodgeball was also a good event. And I know some of those officers are coming off, coming in on their days off. And they're working a lot of hours right now. So I very much appreciate that. It's a good program. And thanks for their work on that. And I, this is new, and so forgive me, but Brian, you, could you come up one second? I want to ask a question about the lawn care companies because I remembered that you talked about this during the budget meeting. And I think it's just good for public record.